All right, let's call this meeting to order. It's going to be an exciting day. Let me read this first and then we'll get started. If anyone wishes to address the City Council on any item considered at this meeting before or during council considerations of that item, which is only one, please fill out the blue speaker request form located in the lemon lighted outgoing at the back of the council chambers and submit it to the city clerk. City Council will allocate up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker for each agenda item. Staff reports are available online at the city's website at www.cityofrunning.gov or in the public view binder located at the podium at the north side of the chambers. All right, we are called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Addet.
Here.
And happy birthday, Councilmember Addet. Councilmember Danuka.
President.
Mayor Protem Resner.
Present.
Vice Mayor Latov.
Here.
And Mayor Muns.
Here. Our first order of business will be, if you could all join me, it is Councilmember Addet's 48th birthday today. So we will, we will sing, "One and All."
Wow.
Happy Birthday.
Ready?
Yeah.
That's not on videotape.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. All right, amen.
Thank you. There's no place I'd rather be.
Yeah, amen. I did bring cake, but unfortunately, there's not enough for all y'all. So, we'll eat it later. All right. Mr. Tippin, would you like to begin the festivities?
I am happy to. So, today is our second official budget workshop for the development of this budget. And as you know, this budget has been difficult compared to some of the budgets we've adopted in the most recent years. At the last budget meeting, you made a number of decisions and we'll reflect those in an overview here in a minute and just let you know where that brings us. We'll also review the assumptions for revenues that were made. Then we'll go over some additional items for reduction of expenses that we'll need your consensus on. And then following that, we'll go a little bit into our fee structure. At the last meeting, the council indicated they were interested to know more about the fee structure for our services that we provide. We've broken those down a bit. We didn't go to a total deep dive. Most of the departments did a fair amount of work, but the results are inconclusive in terms of the amount we would receive until we receive some additional direction from the council. And so we'll go through essentially development services and community services. They have the largest fee structure. And then we'll talk more about all city services. And so depending on that conversation and the direction you give us, we'll go back and we'll finish off some of that work. And then the intent is that after the direction from the council, we will have to do a fair amount of budgeting, if you will, over the next six weeks. And then when we come back on April 17th, we should have a proposed balanced budget for your consideration. If not, obviously, we'll bring back additional items for your consideration for reduction in expenses or possibly enhancements in revenues. And we'll talk about that a little bit as to what that may or may not be. So with that, I'll begin the presentation unless there's some initial comments from the city council. Okay. So jumping into our revenue assumptions, so recall that our decision on sales tax was that we were going to assume that there was no increase year-over-year from 2025 for 2025 from 2024. And that 2026 onward within the tenure plan, we'd assume a 2.5% increase. Based on some recent results, we think that is a relatively conservative, at least for this year, as far as our starting point. So we're pretty comfortable with that. We actually had a decent fourth quarter of the last calendar year. So if we have some of that continuing over the next few quarters, we'll be sitting pretty good on the sales tax. So we're pretty comfortable with where we're sitting with sales tax. Property tax, the council had agreed to a 4.5% year-over-year from '24 to '25, and then a 3% increase per year thereafter. I listed here that we may change that in the final budget, which we would talk to you about in April. And the reason for that is twofold. Number one is the 3%, I think is generally pretty conservative with what we've seen over the last five to 10 years in terms of real estate values. And that in addition to, we have seen some additional commercial properties moving forward. And we know that some commercial properties are going to be wrapping up and getting occupancies. And so my recommendation, if it comes to that, like we need an extra couple hundred thousand, let's say, I would think it might be more prudent to actually assume some increases in property tax than to make additional cuts in expenses. So, but we won't know that really until we get all of the budget put together and for your presentation on the 17th. Transient occupancy tax, again, keeping it flat between '24 and '25, and then onward, about a 4% increase per year. And of course, that 4% is impacted by not only who is actually occupying hotel rooms, but also the charge of the room rate, right? So as room rates go up or down, so does the TOT fluctuate. So I think that 4% historically has been a pretty decent number for us to assume. And then cannabis tax, at the last council meeting, the council made a decision on what those rates would be going forward, starting July 1st. Our projections right now is that that would, that would be, I'm sorry, that would be about a 4% increase thereafter in terms of the overall increases, which would be basically based on inflation and consumption. And then we'll talk in a minute about what the revenue estimates have resulted in as far as the budget is concerned. Any questions on any of those previous assumptions?
The property tax up 4%, is that just based on the renewal of properties that get raised with new owners, or are we just raising the base rate up?
So that, what that assumes is the entirety of the property tax. So the property tax that we receive includes all of the housing, but it also includes luxury tax, boats and planes and that sort of thing. And generally, what you see an increase is based on two basic things. One is what you're referring to, which is somebody sells a house that's been in a house for 15 years and they have a lower basis, and they sell it and it comes up to a higher basis. So we receive an increase in property tax that way. So if we have housing turnover, generally, we're going to see an increase in our property tax with some exceptions. There are some abilities for people over 50 to, you know, sell and maintain a basis and that sort of thing. And then the other thing we see is new construction. So whether it's new residential or new commercial properties, when they get put on the tax rules, we'll see an increase in our property tax based on the new construction as well. So those previous workshop adjustments on the cannabis tax, we went from $3 to $5 per square foot on cultivation, 5% to 6% on retail, which anecdotally matches Shasta Lake. And then on other commercials, 3% in grocery receipts to 4% of grocery receipts. Our estimate right now is that's an increase of about $450,000 per year in revenues for the general fund. The deferral of the loans for the radios that we purchased along with REU and others, that's deferred for two years. Again, reminder, the interest will still accrue, so this will just be a deferral of principal only, so $470,000 per year. So that's only good for fiscal years 2006 and 2007, so it doesn't really benefit the tenure plan significantly, but it does help our cash flow position. So when you think about the budget, you think of it in two components. One is the two years, that is our expenditure plan, and that is more of a cash basis, if you will. We have to identify that we have proper revenues and proper cash to actually account for the expenditures that are anticipated. When you go from years three to 10, that's more of anticipated expenses and anticipated revenue. So in the tenure plan, this $470,000 is rolled back into the tenure plan, and we experience those expenses starting up again in year three of the tenure plan. And then CalFire rental payments, just as a reminder, this is associated with the property exchange that we did with CalFire for the Stillwater Business Park Lot 11A and the CalFire site right next door on Cypress. We made that exchange. We did an appraisal of both properties, found that their property, not surprisingly, was worth more. It has lots of infrastructure improvements, lots of buildings downtown versus a, just a greenfield industrial park. So the deal was that we didn't exchange any money. Instead, they were going to stay where they're at and have a lease agreement, and they would be credited on a month-to-month basis for the difference. And at some point in time, that's going to run out, and it just turns out that that's this year. So in May or so of this year, they'll start paying their full, full value. I believe it's like $14,000 a month. And so that accounts for about $170,000 a year that has not been budgeted into our accounts. And we didn't budget that because at the time, they had told us that they fully intended to be moved by now. And so they're not, so that's actually good news. It just gets rolled into as revenue. I should probably say that those combined are about 1.1 million of our five. We're targeting the total of five. And I've, as I've said before, that 5 million will fluctuate a little bit as we build out the rest of the budget, but right now, we're just using five as our target. So this is about 1.1 million. Moving on to these recommendations, so these are new recommendations that we're beginning to build the budget, and I need your consensus on these. So our rolling stock, so this is really, for the most part, it's your fire trucks, your police cars, your parks equipment, that sort of stuff. It's a rolling stock. We account for that within these accounts, and then they can build a little bit over time, they get segregated out. And then when they go buy a car or a piece of equipment, you know, you are familiar with those staff reports coming back and saying, hey, we would like to purchase this, and we have adequate money within our rolling stock. And then we take that money and put it into the budget, and then they buy those pieces of equipment. So this one, I just want to be perfectly clear, we're recommending a total reduction of about 250,000. I'll look to my left, just because I'm estimating this. If you, if you look at our general fund rolling stock pot of money, it's probably somewhere in total between 800 and a million dollars per year right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, so that's in total, that's all departments. So we're recommending we trim that to about $250,000 per year, and that will show up in the tenure plan. But the important thing to note is that there's likely going to be points in time in the future where if we identify one-time funds, such as a grant, or maybe we just have a really great year in sales tax or a lot of savings, we may need to take that money and allocate it towards a fire truck or for a fleet to five police cars or some parks vehicles or something like that. So what this does is it provides us a opportunity to be balancing our tenure plan, but we need to recognize that there will be expenses required because there's no way you could do a $250,000 reduction for 10 years straight and not suffer the consequences. So I just want you to realize that we are telling you absolutely.
So for rolling stock?
Yeah.
Sorry. For rolling stock, do we have like a savings account that we put in there, and then as we need stuff, we pull from that account for different rolling stocks?
Yeah, it's kind of like that, but it's, so we anticipate, we have, just like we do our tenure plan, we have them do a tenure plan for their rolling stock needs, identification.
For fire?
Fire, police, parks, actually, we do it for everybody.
For everybody?
Yeah. Waste water, water, REU, they all have their rolling stock plans. And so what this would look like, and by the way, we've never funded those fully, even in, frankly, even in the utilities, sometimes we don't fund them fully. Sometimes that's because I just don't feel that they're being realistic with their replacement needs. But with police and fire in particular, we've always held that down. And with parks, we generally just say they don't get anything. Oftentimes, parks gets leftover trucks, you know, from the utilities, and they buy them sort of surplus. That's why, I don't think we have them anymore, but for a while, you would see the yellow parks trucks driving around. Those, that's because they're like vintage 90s.
So is the rolling stock one account, but it gets allocated towards each one, or do each have their own rolling stock account?
They each have their own, but I'll hand the accounting question over.
So what we do is we basically do transfers from the different departments. Some of those are associated to the general fund, some of those are associated to enterprise funds such as electric or water, wastewater. And we do a transfer from those funds based on the transfer account to a dedicated kind of holding account. The money's held there during the fiscal year. Actually, when we close the books, we're going to talk about the annual comprehensive financial report, we actually roll that money back to those departments because it's not a thing from a financial statement perspective, but it is an identified source of cash that we basically hold throughout the year for budgetary purposes. There's actually council policy, it covers rolling stock, something we call equipment replacement and technology replacement, and it gives us the tool with council's approval to transfer money from that kind of holding area when the need arises. And so they each carry cash balances in those accounts.
In their own rolling stock. So when we say we're going to cut 250,000, I mean, I would say most often what gets brought up to us for rolling stock is police and fire. Those are the most obvious ones that come to us. So when we say rolling stock, we don't just mean that police and fire are going to get cut. This is like across the board, everybody's going to pay a little bit out of the rolling stock?
No. So what we would do is we would cut the amount we're going to transfer for the general fund departments.
To each department?
No. We transfer into the rolling stock fund from those dedicated departments. So in this case, police, fire, parks are the lion's share of our general fund. So we would reduce the amount that police, fire, and parks are saving in our rolling stock fund, which then basically the rolling stock fund is broke up into 30 or 40 different pieces. Sorry.
So we're just reducing it's the amount that's there?
That the amount is there and available by year for police and fire.
To anybody that needed it?
No. Only, the only department that can use it is the department that put it in. So it's not just, everybody puts money in and everybody gets to use it.
Well, I'm just wondering, who's going to get the cut here? Is police?
Police and fire.
Police and fire.
Police and fire. So police and fire are the ones that are basically reducing their rolling, this is their money.
That's, yeah, more or less.
Or budgeted.
And it's your money, but yeah, it's, it's, they will get reduced.
It's their budget.
Like I said, parks, I mean, we've had years where it's $25,000 in a rolling stock account.
Sure.
So if, when you're talking $250,000, it's police and fire.
It's police and fire.
That's correct. Yeah. And that's not going to hurt us too much in the next, you know, couple of years.
Unless they crash some cars.
Well, don't even bring that up.
Well, you're never going to do that.
Is it, is it only police and fire because like REU pays for their own vehicles?
Yes, that's correct.
So our $5 million shortfall is just general fund stuff?
That's correct. Yeah, the other departments that you mentioned, with the exception of airports, are enterprise funds, and those departments have their rate base, right? They have the ability to bring those items to you and say, here's what our expenses are, here's what the rates need to be, and then you have the opportunity to increase those rates to equate the expenses.
Thank you.
With the other item is the, we have some additional attrition that's happening within the police department, and my recommendation is that we attrit some of those positions away. This isn't all of them, but another three police position, police officer positions, that's about $480,000 annually ongoing. Those are real savings as opposed to some of my cautions with the rolling stock. What this does is takes our general fund officers down to about 110. We started this budget year that we're in now at 122. So it is a total of 12 officers that we are eliminating. Nobody's getting laid off, it's all attrition. These are positions that we've been strategically holding, so it's a total of 12. Now, the police department has been active in trying to find additional grants, and so they've been able to identify four different, different funding sources, the DUI officer, the tobacco officer, a new school resource officer out at Foothill. And then due to some issues with new pension rules, we had to stop doing red light camera reviews with our retired and new tenants. And so what we've done is converted some other cash over to a traffic officer, and now the traffic officers rotate through to do the red light camera reviews. And so there are four officer positions.
I'll do it.
You'll have to take it off with our city attorney as to whether it's legal or not. So we're, we are able to add four back, but those are short-term based on the grant tenure. So the true reduction in terms of your ongoing officers is 12 down to 110, but for a period of time, two to three years, we have four back. So we'll officially have 114 sworn officers if you approve this.
How many are we allotted for the fire department?
How many are we allotted?
Yeah, how many sworn? Yeah, how many sworn do we have at, at the fire department?
Are you talking prevention officers?
I'm talking about everything.
Okay, there, yeah. So, we have sworn officers in prevention. There's about four or five that are arson investigators, and those are actually law enforcement officers, hence my confusion. I don't know the total number. We have about 102, is Jared, 102 firefighters?
104.
104. It's close.
How many, have we attrited any of those?
Yeah, 12. So, that's our, that was, the reason they're not included here is because that was a previous discussion. So, we've attrited 12. We are down to the minimum staffing in the fire department. Now, not all of those positions have been attrited as of now, but they should be at or shortly after July, July 17th.
One of the things I wanted to do is give Chief Van Lanningham and Chief Barner some credit. I mean, I think, I can't remember, was it 12 we got through grant?
12 are still being funded through a grant.
Yeah. And then, I know that these four, and there was another three somehow that came through a grant through Park Public Works.
Well, we've got a number, actually, we have, you know, a number of firefighters funded through the REU Fire Mitigation Plan.
Yep.
That's been approved by the state of California.
I'm, I like it. I just wanted to give a shout out to those guys.
He's probably, trying to think. The, the REU one, shout out to Nick Zettel.
Nick gets enough credit. Let's give the credit.
He does, but that was his fire plan that, you know, put that into effect. But, yeah, we're, we're down to minimum staffing in operations from a fire perspective. If, if we had to, there is some positions, one in particular, within the fire admin and prevention area that is being held vacant right now. We're doing upgrades, and that position will be held until such time as we have a budget and we know we can fill it. So, I will credit Chief Van Lanningham for reorganizing a bit in the short term to make sure we're still accomplishing all we need to do while holding that position vacant because his admin and prevention staff is very lean and always has been.
Thank you. Thank you, Nick. We appreciate you. Mr. Penison?
So.
Microphone.
Are you on?
So.
Oh, Aaron and you are fighting.
Need some abuse. Okay. So, I was sort of confused by this, so I just want some clarity. So, we've been talking about a $5 million deficit, but we've cut about 3 million in police and fire. So, it's 5 million on top of that 2 million or 3 million for police and fire. Can you?
Yeah. So, this, we've known this deficit from, you know, we've, we've known this structural deficit existed going all the way back to the approval of the budget that we're currently in.
Right.
If, the existing council members know that, but for the new council members, when we approve that budget, we recognize that there was a structural deficit. In other words, that we were going to be spending more than we were taking in. But at the time, the economy was so unknown, the decision was we had reserves, and so we were going to continue to move down the path, providing the services to the community while watching closely. And so, as we have been moving through that, we've been holding positions or finding savings. And it's not just police and fire. It's also been inspector and development services, and a planner and development services, an assistant city clerk position in the clerk's office, and so on and so forth. And so, we've been holding positions. We've cut O and M. But to your point, that amount is in addition to the five. So, the total reduction from where we started this budget year is probably pushing 8 million.
And can you outline for us how many cops then we have, we're going to lose? Was 12 total, but in that last round, we did buy attrition, nine?
Nine, yes.
And that was what amount?
In terms of dollars?
Yeah.
Well, let me do my math real quick. Well, it's, yeah, about 1.5 million.
1.5?
Yeah.
And then, those 12 that we're losing for fire, what is that?
About the same, actually, because the total cost is maybe 1.8.
I thought it was roughly almost, that's right.
Probably 1.8. Yeah, it's a little bit more because there's 12 of them, but the, the per-employee cost is a little different. Part of that is the number that we use, for instance, on a police officer is their salary, their full benefit package, but we also annualize their equipment, cars, equipment, you know, utility belts, vests, et cetera. And we do the same with the fire department because there's, you know, the fire trucks are much less often purchased, right? So, we don't really include that. So, we really just include their normal PPE, which is a personal protective equipment. And so, they're a little bit less per employee, and that's why the, the numbers are a little bit different.
All right.
Quick question. I know you and I have chatted, I have also chatted with Chief Barner. We get this question in the community a lot. They say, "If we want to save money in our budget, they believe a viable option would be to have reserve officers." And I understand that's not a viable solution for a lot of logistics, but I think it's important that maybe we answer that question, just because we get that question a lot. But, would you be able to comment on that?
Yeah, for starters, reserve officers aren't, aren't officers. So, you know, you'd have to start with a premise that we don't believe we need 110 or 122 officers, right? So, you have to start with a premise that we can do just as good with 100 officers and bring in 10 reserve officers, which just isn't the case. A reserve officer is an extra hand, it's an extra set of eyes. It is not an officer who can effects, effectuate arrests. You know, they can't do any of the other things that a sworn officer can do. And so, the other areas that use reserve officers, which are very few in our area, Anderson has them on the books, they don't use them. Tahima has them on the books, they don't use them. So, if we got to the point where we had to cut all the way down to 100, you know, officers, and we thought, "Well, we can get some more eyes on the street and bring in four reserve officers." That might be something you'd want to do just because we're so depleted and we can't afford an additional officer, and we can get four reserve officers for the cost of one. They still can't do anything other than drive around and look for things. They can't respond to calls. They can be eyes and ears, and as soon as they see something, they could call a officer to respond. And so, they don't help that much in terms of actually policing a city and doing what the community wants to do. They actually are an additional cost. So, I'd say reserve officers are awesome if you get to the point where you feel you're fully staffed, and then you want to do a little bit more for less than the cost of a full officer, because then you have additional eyes and ears on the street, plus we have officers who are able to respond. Because as we reduce our officers, as everybody knows, we have more calls per officer, we have less officers on the street, so their calls go up, and they have more to respond to. They don't have time to necessarily respond to somebody who says, "Hey, I see somebody that's suspicious on the River Trail." So, it's, it's, it's a good concept, but it just doesn't really play out in actual policing of a city unless you're at full staffing. The other thing is, when we looked at it really in detail, obviously, the natural tendency is to use retired officers to serve in that capacity because they, they do have the training, although they won't be sworn officers. Very few of them actually want to go do that work without being armed. So, they have a CCW they can carry, but we, as a liability perspective, really don't want reserve officers to be carrying firearms. So, there's not a lot of people who have the training and the expertise to actually be reserve officers, who also will do so without carrying a weapon. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I think it was an important answer.
Okay, thank you. So, and then the last one, I know the last meeting we had, the council said that the TOT contract with the chamber was off limits. I am just struggling to see how we're actually going to get to our target without having some reduction. I've talked to the chamber president, Todd Jones, about this. He reluctantly said that he could make that work. He provided me a list of things that he wouldn't be doing over the period of time. I'm sure he's more than willing to speak to that, if, if you like. But I think it's a necessary reduction that we need to take when we're making reductions elsewhere, like in our police force. Having a trim in some of our tourism contract makes sense to me, keeping in mind that we still have, I think it's close to $2 million, going to the Reading Tourism Marketing Group for advertising. They're more specific to hotels, but they also do other advertising for marketing our community. And so, my recommendation is that we also reduce that tourism cost contract by $350,000. But I also would recommend the council consider providing a five-year extension to the chamber so that they can weather this storm and then build it back. So, the presumption here is that as our economy can return and TOT can return, we can provide them back to the full value of that contract, and they still have all the momentum built up doing the work. So, my recommendation is that we reduce them for $350,000 per year, but that we would consider a five-year extension on their current contract, which expires next year. And I'm sure Mr. Jones is available for any questions you have, as am I.
May I have your question, Mr.?
I, I do have one, yeah.
Yeah.
So, my question, maybe Todd can answer this one, but it's a marketing budget, which helps.
Can I go up to the microphone?
It's a marketing budget, which allows us to make money off the money that we spend. Todd, would you be able to answer that question to where, would you be able to give any kind of prediction or pulse? Do we spend $350,000 less? How much revenue could we decrease that actually hurts us on the back end?
Predict how much TOT we would lose by having this cut next year.
I mean, we spend less money, we're going to get less of a return. And maybe not in the first year, but maybe that impacts us in year two or three down the road.
Sure. I, I think I'll say, I'm trying, obviously, for preservation of this as much as I possibly can, although I've talked to Barry several times, and I, I also understand the position that the city council's in. I would like to keep this, has a million dollars a year for the rest of this big contract, and then moving forward for five years. I also realize the position that the city is in right now. We don't know what the next year's going to bring. And so, I'm, I'm sympathetic because I understand the process you're going through, and as much as it's hard for me to say, "Yeah, you know, go ahead and slash it," I understand the position you're in. So, it's very conflicting personally for me to be up here right now and say, "Yeah, take, take $350,000." And, you know, basically, what, and I'll, I'll just be upfront with you, and I'm presenting on Tuesday night for city council for, for Visit Reading, so not great timing. I wish it was two weeks ago, maybe. But with the reduction in this, you know, basically, we're just going to reduce our reach. Right now, over the last three years, and I think I pointed this out last time, the 10 years prior, and I'll get to your, your question, council member, the 10 years prior to us having the contract, the average TOT over 10 years was about 4.8 million. Over the last three years, we've seen that cut up, seen that increase over the last three years that we've had the contract to about 7.2 million. So, we've taken $1 million per year, we've added about $3 million per year into TOT, into our community. And again, I'll go into a little bit more detail on Tuesday night for what this is, but, you know, the branding, the outreach, the people we're using, the content we're creating. And so, if there were a reduction for our final year, which I don't want, but I understand, if there were a reduction, it, it really is just going to reduce our reach. We have a lot of professionals that we outsource to right now for ad buying, ad placement, the amount of money we spend on ads, and the creative content that we create right now. And we would basically just have to have a big reduction in that for the final year of this contract. And so, our reach would not be as much. I think we've built a really good foundation in the past four years. You know, I'm not going to, I'm, I'll, I'll take it like a man if it happens, and we're going to continue to do the best job that we possibly can to represent our communities. So, I can't quite tell you what the downturn is. I will tell you, and again, I'll talk about this Tuesday, you know, all communities similar size to us, and really all over the country, we're all kind of going through the same TOT waves. Ours has stayed pretty high, not as high as projections. Our ADR, which is our average daily rate, has gone quite a bit up. So, I, I can't predict what the next year would bring, but we certainly would have, you know, a 30 to 40% reduction in impressions to potential visitors to our market, based on, you know, the reduction in usage of funds that we would have for next year, if this were the, the number that the council decides on.
So, I mean, to answer the question, it's obvious that, and that's why I have a hard time justifying dropping this, is we don't know the impact. We, we may, we may lose $350,000 from you spending $350,000. We could lose more, we could lose less. We just don't know, and that's a hard decision there. And I look for the best pulse I could from you to say, you know, tell us we're crazy to cut this, or just tell us that we'll be okay, you know? So.
At the end of the day, you know, it's one of those things, it is what it is. I certainly want to keep this because I think we're doing a good job. But again, I'm conflicted because I, I know the tough position that the city council's in right now.
What's the name of Ed Ruhlman's group?
Ed Ruhlman is the president of the Reading Tourism Marketing Group, also known as Choose Reading, and he's also on the Shasta Cascade Wonderland Association, which is a regional destination marketing organization.
I don't know who's the best answer for this, Mr. Tippin or Mr. Jones, but what is their outreach compared to the chamber? And can we get a presentation from them and?
You actually receive a presentation from them about twice a year. Again, they're, they're similar, a little different. Their focus is generally more on trying to get heads in beds, if you will, which actually drives your TOT. So, in the sense that they're hyper-focused on just trying to get people into the hotel rooms, they do more of that direct kind of work, whereas what the chamber does is a more global outreach and, and trying to get not only people interested in things that would make them stay, but just also just get here, right? And so, they, they get about 1.5 million per year from their own, from the TOT, and that is their additional tax, right? They've taxed themselves an additional 2% on top of the 10, and so, they get that direct, and so, that's about 1.5 million dollars per year. And they use that not just for advertising, they actually invest in capital improvement. So, for instance, they give, they gave money for the Denver flight. They also gave money for the new, or rehabilitation of all the volleyball courts in the sports complex, which will result in hotel room usage, right? Because if, with those, those improvements, plus the Lake Reading volleyball courts, we could actually probably bring in bigger tournaments than we've been able to do in the past. And so, you know, this $350,000 represents about a 14% reduction in our overall spending on marketing from TOT.
And, but, you, you guys, you guys gave to the airport, didn't you, Todd?
Correct. Yes. Through, not through any funds that were received from the city for TOT. It came from the Ford Reading Foundation, which is our nonprofit arm of the, of the chamber.
Okay. Councilmember Reddick?
Are you wanting us to give our opinions on each of these things as they go? Or are we going to do it at the end?
No, I, as we go would be preferred.
As we go?
Because, because, because as I go down, for instance, if the answer here is no, I need to know that I'm going to raise the three officers to five.
Okay, so, well, I don't want to lose any more officers. I think going down to 110, when I, and this was the screaming from the rooftops, because we had 108 or 109, close to 110 was, you know, you can't police in the town. So, to go down another three when we've already gone down nine, I'm, I'm, I would rather find $480,000 somewhere else. Sorry, Todd. Love you. Want, want you to succeed. I would rather you lose 250,000 because I don't want you, you to lose staff. So, my concern is that you're going to lose staff if you cut it down to 350. Is that?
This is the cut. So, it's not, if, if I'm understanding it correctly, we would still have 650,000 per year.
Well, wait a minute. Did you think it was the other way?
No, he didn't. No, he didn't.
So, at this level, I, you know, as, as awful as, I feel like I'm treating myself in the foot, we would be able to retain our current staff. We would all have an increased workload, but we, we would reduce some of our outside contractors. but we would reduce some of our outside contractors, and we would reduce the advertising. That's the biggest bucket of funding that we would take from, so we would, we would have a big reduction in advertising and creative content.
So I have a question. So given the projections that we believe are obviously going to go up, because all those projections are much higher than what we were, can we just cut this or suspend this amount for a year and then, so that it stays?
Yeah, you can reinstate it anytime, so our recommendation would be that you would reduce it and assume it's reduced for the tenure plan, period. But anytime things turn around or anything else, you can increase it.
Right, I know, that's just so far likely, less likely to happen. So I just don't, watching how this all works, I don't think that that would happen. So I also don't want to cut our marketing, although if we don't have any police officers on the street, we're not going to get people visiting anyway.
We can tell a really good story, don't worry about it.
Yeah, we just police ourselves. So, I mean, to me, the 350, I understand for the tenure budget, we need to do that. However, our projections are so much higher. We went flat for our projections for '25, '26, '26, '27, and on, they go back up. So wouldn't we be able to?
No, so, no. So we decided flat, right, for this year. It may be a little bit above that, and then we assume a 2.5% increase. That's all built in.
Right.
So we've already built all that in. And so we need ongoing savings, because recall the graph that shows us tanking, you know, on into the future years?
Yes, yes.
And so we need ongoing savings, and so that's why I pointed out on the radio, so clearly that on the radio deferred loan, that that's only two years, that's really just a cash issue, and then it kicks back in. So if you were to do this just for one year or just two years, it doesn't help year three. So I still need those ongoing savings. And so we either adopt a budget that has a structural deficit, or we take more ongoing savings from somewhere else.
So then how do you get back up? If you're, if what you're saying is true, then how do you get back up to 350? Or get back up to a million?
Well, you may not ever get back up to a million unless things turn around, right? The whole point here is that you also have many, many opportunities in a tenure environment to find those savings, right? So as you go, we decide not to do this or not to do this, and as every, every decision that's made by councils in future years can begin to change that trajectory by lowering expenses, however that looks, right? We decide we're, well, I'll give you two examples, we've talked about this. We decide that we're going to close down certain facilities and just not maintain them anymore.
Right.
Right? So we can make those decisions as we go if we're interested in making this come back up instead of something else.
Well, I would just say that you should be okay with losing 350,000 for the next five years, especially if you lock into an extension at that, at that lower amount. So can you, can you live with doing this at that?
I'll live with whatever the council offers me at the end of the day, whatever it is. Having that five-year extension that City Manager Tippin suggested will help me because right now, you know, knowing that this could come theoretically, it makes my staff nervous. You know, we have one year left on the contract, we're seeing a reduction now, so having another, you know, effectively six years approximately from this summer would help us really kind of retool and make sure that we're operating as efficiently and making sure that the expectations for our contracts, which would need to be re, if this were to happen, we would have to redo our contract because there are certain things we can't do. One of the other big ones is public relations, which, again, I was going to talk about Tuesday, but all of those national articles that we get, we're paying for those articles. Every time we're in the LA Times, we pay for that. And so that kind of stuff would go away, and as long as we understand what the expectations are for the next six years, and we can retool that, it would give us some certainty for our staff and kind of understanding what our outlook's going to be.
Okay. Well, if you, if you know that likely for the next six years, your budget's going to be 650.
I don't love it, but I also understand.
All right. I, if we're going piece by piece, I have a huge problem with losing three more officers as far as the level of service and what, at a minimum, we are willing to do, given all of the issues that are arising, or what, all the progress that has been made to go down 12 officers, I think is not at all the option that we should take.
Vice Mayor Mike Totten, and we'll all give our opinion.
Yeah, we can switch back to the police, but again, answering this question, I just reminded the council this, that this may not really be $350,000 in savings. We just don't know what it's going to do to the TOT tax. Our TOT tax could go down. Are the hotel operators nervous with us cutting $350,000 in spending? They're the ones that, well, it's interesting, and I don't, I don't know, you know, Barry, you said they get TOT, they get T-bid. Do we, it's just so that our TMG, Choose Redding, is getting a T-bid, Tourism Business Improvement District, and that is, that was just renewed this last summer for 10 years, I believe. And so they have a dedicated fund that the city, in my, in my understanding, cannot touch. That's a separate T-bid, is that correct?
That's correct. They can dedicate it back to certain expenses, but that's their decision, not ours.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we're all a little bit uncertain about what's happening. I mean, we see the trends, you know, we've seen a lot more hotel rooms come on board, so the TOT is rising, the average daily rate is rising, but we're also seeing more hotel rooms come on, come online. And so I think the hoteliers are all feeling a pinch a little bit from just the dilution, but overall, we still have more, we still have, you know, good demand, we just have more hotel rooms, and so people aren't quite as full as they used to be, but that total pie is getting bigger.
Yes.
So you clarified this. I had one question, was money to them goes from T-bid, not from TOT. It goes from TOT to the Chamber?
TOT to the Chamber, T-bid to the Redding Tourism Marketing Group. So the million dollars that goes to the Chamber is 100% general fund dollars, completely at the discretion of this body.
All right, do we, we just take a vote? I mean, how do you?
No, I don't really need a vote, vote. What I need is consensus, so that I know that I go build the final budget that I bring to you on April 17th, that it's going to be what you are looking for. If you, if you wish to take a vote, that's fine.
I think we're all reluctant. I just, I just don't want to lose two more cops. I mean, everybody I talk to, number one is police, second is fire.
Yeah, and so if that's the council's decision, I will try to find other, other cuts. I will tell you two things. It's probably layoffs somewhere.
Yeah.
And it's probably a reduction in services somewhere else.
The ones that are good through the police and fire are through attrition, not layoffs.
Yeah, we're not laying anybody off right now, but if you don't agree with this plan, there likely can be layoffs that are going to be imminent because we can't, I don't know where else I'm going to go. The reason we're presenting this to you is because I can't identify something else that allows us to provide the services that we provide today. And I'll remind you what I told you last time. The only place that we've increased staffing since 2004 is in utilities and in police and fire. So we are bare bones everywhere else, and so the realities are that those other departments that are, and also, I'll tell you this, you know, we talk about the cost allocation plans, and so another employee that is in a different department, if they don't work here anymore, we get maybe 35% of their total cost to the general fund. With police, it's one for one. So, so the reality is, is as we've talked about, 85% of your discretionary funding is paid for by, or paid, is the cost of police and fire. And so when you take, if I'm to get to $480,000 through other employee reductions, that's probably 10 employees.
All right.
Just so you know.
I'm with you.
This is 12 in place.
All right.
No. Well, if you want to go back to 12, if you want to go back to full 122.
No, I don't want to go down to 110, though. I don't want to lose nine, but I'd surrender to 12.
We've already approved the nine, so we're really talking about the three.
Right, so these three I don't.
And I'm just saying, the three is 10. So I probably have to find 10, or I have to actually work with our labor unions to find other concessions. So I have very little tools that I can pull at this stage. We have attrition occurring here, and so, you know, I've, while the police department obviously does not like it, just like Mr. Jones doesn't like it, they feel they can make it work at that level. I wouldn't recommend it otherwise.
So.
Go ahead, go ahead.
My apologies.
Oh, I was just going to reiterate that I think going through this entire budget process, that a majority of the community is going to be very frustrated because cutting $5 million is a lot. We are, we are essentially taking, if we're doing a good job, we are making everyone a little bit frustrated, and it's evenly distributed. So while I don't want to take away marketing money, I don't think that that can be avoided. And while I don't want to lose three more police officers, finding between those two is close to a million, close to, close to a million dollars, I'm really estimating. That's a lot of money, and I also don't want to lose 10 from, I don't want to lose 10 from somewhere else. I don't think anyone ever is like, let's have less public safety. No one thinks that. But we also only have so many, I, we only have so much money to work with, and we also can't continue to have conversations where we're like, and we also care about parks, and we also want to keep this open, and we want to keep this open. Like, we do have to make cuts, that is our job this year. It's our job.
Mr. Mayor, just for context, so in 2021, the start of that budget, we had 111 sworn officers. So we grew from 111 to 122 to where we are now. So just for context, this really takes us back to two more than we had in 2021.
Yeah, but our calls for services have probably.
They haven't increased.
They haven't?
Significantly. I mean, it's a lot. I mean, but we had almost 100,000 back in 2010.
So these are four grant-funded officers for short term. How long do we have, how long will we have them? These are in addition to 110, I'm assuming, right?
Yeah, so the four officers, three of those have between a two- and three-year life, and that, that's assuming we don't get the additional grants. So for instance, the DOI officer could get renewed, or the tobacco officer could get renewed. So, but today, what we have money for is between two and three years.
And that's in addition, just to confirm, in addition to 110?
Yes. So we're going from 110 to 114. Yes.
But those aren't patrol officers, like, these are not people that are going to be on patrol?
Yeah, well, they'll, they'll do the tobacco work, they'll do DOI, so DOI is a little bit of both, right? There are additional officers that's doing DOI patrols. The red flex one is a traffic motor, so they are on patrol, doing traffic work, right? They're not, they're not patrol, but they're a traffic officer on a motorcycle generally.
The red light officers are on.
What's that?
The red light officers are on.
So we have red flex, right? So there's funding that we have identified for reviewing the red light camera videos, right, and issuing citations. We can't use retired annuities anymore, so we reshuffle.
But you, I thought you said to view the red light camera material, not be on a motorcycle. So they're both, they do both?
They're both, yes. So as I, as I noted, that, what we're doing is they're rotating through. So we added a traffic officer, and they rotate through to review those. So not one officer sits there the whole time, so they rotate through, or if we have light duty requirements, they can do that work as well. And so that, that is a more permanent, so one of the four is a permanent, the others have reduced, you know, based on grant funding. But just to be clear, our tenure plan is built to keep them. So we're not building the tenure plan to lose those four positions. The tenure plan would be built to keep those four positions, we just have to have other revenue sources that come in to play at that point in time. So it's both a cash savings today, and then we would have identified savings in year three, four, five, to keep those officers, much like we would do with the firefighters. We have 12 firefighters that are on grant funding. In the tenure plan, when that grant runs out, we'll still have them in the financial plan to keep them on board. We're not, we're not going to say that grant goes away, they go away. So we're building both of those elements. So we have temporary funding, but then it becomes general fund, funding.
Just so everybody's clear that we will effectively have 110 plus three to four officers.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, so one comment, if I recall, in previous years, we had community partners that helped fund positions. Is that a possibility where we could give some guidance or a request to see if staff might be able to reach out to some community partners and see if we could raise some money for the short term to fund officers and?
Yeah, we can. There's, there's two problems with that. One is, while that was a great endeavor, the reality is only Bethel Church donated any significant amount of money. So they initially put 750, then they put more. They themselves put over a million dollars into keeping those officers. I think in total, it was something like 150,000 in total from the rest of the community that actually came for that. So it, it was a great idea, it really didn't foster more giving to, to have officers. And the other thing is, is that it, too, is short term. So it just allows you, you know, X amount of years to do, to deal with that. And so it's not really a way to solve long-term budget issues, and what we're talking about is a long-term structural budget issue that we're solving.
Let's hear even copy consensus.
I would say that the plan presented by the city manager and staff is very sound, given the circumstances we are in.
So you're just, yes or no?
Yes, I'm supportive of that.
Same.
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely not. I don't think we should lose three more police officers.
No, we're all in favor of the cut to tourism contract.
I thought we were talking about all three.
Oh, all three, all three are?
On the page?
Yeah. I was just going about the tourism, I thought we were just talking about that one, but.
However you want to do it.
Well, then I say, well, we're approving all.
Okay, well, I'll just, rolling stock, I understand, tourism contract, I understand. The police, I don't think, I think, you know, we need to speak for the public, the public overwhelmingly cares about public safety. They care about more than I would say they care about other things, and if you pick one topic and you bring everybody here, everybody cares about everything the most because it's going to go away. But I think if the public had to, had to choose between many different things, many things that have come up before us just recently, I think they would say they want to keep police officers. So I'm, I'm absolutely against cutting three more police officers, having already lost nine. I think we have to have a minimum standard of service. These other officers are not our patrol officers. They are, they serve a great role, but they serve something different. So tourism contract, yes, but I think we need to find them somewhere else for police.
The challenge is, we're not, we're, I said, we're not laying off people, they're already.
It doesn't matter, we're not adding them. So we're, we've lost now, now we're going to lose 12 police officers.
Well, you have a consensus.
So I just, I just want to make sure we're not losing, so patrol will still be full. So we'll have full staffing for patrol, this is more of our specialty units. So, well, those are great, yeah, so park rangers, you know, could eventually be in downtown. But, so they're not the patrol officers, they're the special units. And so just, just for my purposes.
I get it, I don't want it either.
So I, we were kind of back and forth. So if we're talking about the full page, in other words, rolling stock, the police, the three positions and the tourism contract, could we go back and get the consensus again, just so I'm, I'm clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just have a question for ten minutes. Do you have any suggestion, then, how do we come up with a half million dollar to keep three police officers?
Yes, we charge cannabis what they should be paying, so that cultivators and retailers are paying the same amount to do business in the city of Redding. That would get you probably up to another $700,000. That would be the first place that I would look, because they haven't had an increase. As a matter of fact, the ordinance says that it should adjust for CPI every year, which I don't think it's ever adjusted for CPI. So if it did, it'd probably be up to $10, and we would meet our deficit, and we wouldn't lose three cops.
I just want to be clear, that the maximum amount you can charge increases by CPI, the amount you actually charge is set by permanent resolution by the city council.
Which is $25, correct?
That's the max, and that max can go up, and I don't know what it is now, it's like 27, 25, or something like that. But the amount you actually charge is set by resolution of the council. And that was set by, in 2019.
That would, that would fix it.
And then set again Tuesday.
Right.
That would fix it.
In addition to that, any other suggestion?
I mean, the comment I'll make, where, we've already voted on the 17.
Why don't we come back to these on the 17th?
Well, that's 750,000, so that would solve a few problems on this page.
Anything else other than that?
We've approved all these. Let's come back to them on the 17th, and we have more questions. I mean, we keep going, we're going to be here till seven o'clock tonight.
You got somewhere else to be?
Continue.
Yes, please.
Okay. So that, that brings us to a total savings of about 2.2 million. And so now we're going to pause for a minute, and this is where we're, we're going to need some additional direction from the council on how you want us to take these next steps with fees. And all of the fees, if we make any increases, actually, you know, obviously come with some increased revenue. So I'm going to go through this a bit, and then if I am not clear, hopefully you can understand what we're doing. And so let's start with building fees. So this is development services, so let's start with building fees. The way those fees are calculated now, they're based on building valuation and then a graduated fee schedule, and it essentially tries to pick up your direct costs for plan, check, and inspection. So if you're doing a building review or a roof inspection, that we're trying to pick up the costs that are directly associated with issuance of that permit and inspection of that permit. About 65% of the fee goes towards the review of the plans, and then 35% goes to the inspection of the construction. What we don't capture in that, and we never have captured in that, is any overhead costs, administrative, operational expense, training, you know, rent on the floor for the general fund purposes, that sort of stuff. That's never been collected. So that's how we calculate our fees today. It's really just based on direct costs, no overhead, no, no other elements. Planning fees are very similar.
Tippin, would it be beneficial to go one by one, or you?
Well, the next sheet, the next sheet is, this is overview, the next sheet is the questions.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
So planning fees are very similar, they're based on direct costs for some permits, and others, others are based on just flat fee, based on cost of analysis, so small or, you know, non-complicated planning fees are maybe just a single cost. Others are based on time and materials, but they're just direct costs. They're not, so there's, again, there's no indirect costs. There's no overhead, no administration, no operational expense, no recognition that we have software, no recognition that we're, you know, doing a whole bunch of work to increase our electronic filings. You know, all of that's just captured by the general fund and paid for by the general fund. And then on miscellaneous, just stuff that we don't collect for, which all this will make sense to you. So we don't really incur any recoverable for when we're doing general plans or specific plans or updates on those. The counter time, there's, you know, extremes amounts of time that the staff spends at the counter just answering questions. None of that's reimbursable. We get a lot of record requests. We have pre-application consults if people want, your next Tuesday, you're going to see the housing element stuff, that's unreimbursable. Ordinance work, you know, so like you think about when you want to modify ordinances, most of those ordinances have to do with short terms or zoning and that sort of stuff. That's all work that's prepared and done by the planning department, and there's no fee associated with that. That's just a cost of the general fund. And so that's how our fees today are structured. And you see those every June. So every June, we bring those fees to you, sometimes with recommended updates based on just CPI or CCI, sometimes based on things that have changed requirements from the state or whatever. So here's some options. So, you know, obviously, the first option is one we wouldn't recommend, but that's full cost recovery. We could just go in and say, we're going to charge every last little dime we can, overhead, everything. The big problem with that, in my opinion, is that that increases a significant amount of administrative work, right? Because you have to now track every hour on every project, and so now you've, you've actually increased the amount of overhead when you're trying to collect overheads. That, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But if you were to do that, our estimate is that you would see a revenue increase of about 10% or $300,000 annually. What we would recommend is that you direct staff to go begin a analysis and modification of your current, of the current practices. And so what that would look like is that we would look for things like direct and incorrect direct costs. What's appropriate to be charging on each one of these permits? For instance, you have a director of development services that is not charging out to, you know, there's, they're not accounted for with any of this, yet they do a lot of work on planning and building side. In our case right now, the development services director is also the building official. So on both sides of the shop, there's a fair amount of work. There's no accounting for the administrative assistance or any of that other work. So our recommendation would be that we do some analysis, determine what would be an appropriate add-on, if you will, to those fees to account for that overhead, that you would ask us to consider how we change some charging practices for what I'll say poor performers. You know, we have a single fee for a water heater replacement. Many of them, they come in, they get the permit, we inspect it, it's done, we're out. Sometimes it's two inspections, sometimes it's three inspections, but they pay the same fee. So should we consider reinspection fees on those things? You know, should we, you know, recognize that, you know, the work that is causing additional work should come with a conditional expense? The same thing with plan reviews. You know, if we get plan reviews that require 18 cycles because they don't address what the, you know, minimum requirements are, you know, we, we literally get building plan sets that, you know, don't actually do any of the required seismic or wind loading requirements on the first submittal. They just want to get it in and they have, you know, your vertical loading, which is just your gravity, but they don't even deal with any lateral forcing. So we review what we can and we send it back. So do we want to consider either, you know, reward programs or extra expense programs? And so obviously, I don't have all those details for you now, and it wouldn't happen all at once. In this case, as well as with planning, there probably is a requirement for some time studies, analysis, and some things could probably happen in June of this year. More likely, a lot of this would happen in June of 2026 because we, we'd want to make sure we do a complete analysis. And then we also have to make sure that we're following under the law, which is Proposition 26, where we can only charge what it costs to actually put the project out, which does include overhead. It is legal to charge overhead, we just don't. So our estimate is that if we did that, that's somewhere between 2% to 5%, about $100,000 extra a year. So our recommendation would be that we move forward with that. And then with planning, I won't do that whole analysis again, but it's basically the same. It's just a little bit different. And the estimate would be a bit, a bit higher, about 25% because it would include things like, should we, should we review and reset some of our counter policies? Should we allow for a 15-minute reconsultation after that? They have to set an appointment and there's a $50 fee or something like that so that we're not doing a significant amount of pre-planning and pre-application processing with our staff, you know, before they actually submit anything and pay any fees. And so it's a very similar conversation, and ironically, it's a little bit more of a percentage, five to 10%, but about the same, about estimated to be about $100,000 a year. So I'll pause with the question, is the council interested in us pursuing a modification of our fee structure practices in the development services department? And, and as I noted, I'll just repeat that some of these point to maybe a water heater permit might be able to be put into effect in June. Many of these, the bigger permits, the more substantial permits in planning, for instance, or extra cost allocation stuff at the permit counter, may take some time studies for us to actually get the right information that we could bring back.
And don't we, with every bid we, we send out or every grant that we accept, we get admin fees and all those sorts of fees? But we don't do it ourselves?
So for, it depends on what you're talking about. So for housing, when housing gets a grant, they put in administrative services, there's, there's costs that we, we can collect for that staff. Planning doesn't have those things, generally speaking. So, you know, with some exceptions, our general plan, for instance, that we just did, we did get a grant, and so that staff time was mostly paid for by a grant, not all of it. There was a significant portion that was not paid for by the grant. But we do get grants where we can, but there's, there's no, it's basically general fund.
But when we, when we award a contract, that comes with admin fees and.
So planning doesn't award those contracts. So development services doesn't do that. And, and so I'm trying to figure out where we're at. When we, you award a contract, it's typically in the public works reign, and it's a public works contract. And what you see on that award is the administrative construction administration cost. That comes out of the funding source. So if it is a grant from Caltrans or something like that, then that grant covers the cost, or at least 88% of the cost of the construction administration work. And it has some overhead in it because we do allow for some overhead, they do allow for some overhead. That's not planning the development services. So they don't issue those same types of projects. And so, you know, at times, there's grants, but the lion's share of the cost associated with planning is paid for by two sources, and that is fees that they charge and the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Proten, resident.
I just wanted to say that I'm willing to explore these things. I want to make sure that whatever comes back from staff has some sort of reward program. I'd love to reward those engineers and such who are submitting plans that are to state code right from the beginning. And I totally think that that's a conflict that we have between the city and people who are designing things and, and people who are paying for things or paying for those changes or development that oftentimes we're frustrated as maybe the homeowner or the property owner, and we're being told it's the city. But when we go and look at plans, because, you know, the layman doesn't understand or notice those sort of things, that it often the buck gets passed on, onto the city. So I'd love to report, I mean, reward the guys. Maybe they get a discount if they submit it and it meets all the codes the first time, and maybe there's some sort of like.
Yeah, that may be with the reinspection or review. So in other words, there's, there's a base price that's, if it's a one round of comments, it's a base price, and then for every round after, you charge. So those are the types of things we'd like to explore, not only what we could do, but what other cities may be doing.
Yeah.
And so that, that's exactly what this modification would look like.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Just to comment and question, like, would, would doing some of this put more pressure on public safety, meaning pressure on the fire department because maybe it'd be a deterrent? Some people don't file for a permit to, say, change their water heater, and therefore it's done improperly, and now we have a fire, and then it puts more pressure and resources using the fire.
But I don't, I don't see that link.
Okay.
Is there a potential that if we raise the fees too much, that people won't get permits? Certainly, yeah, that's always the case. I personally don't think a, you know, 2% to 5% or 5% to 10% overall increase in these fees is going to result in, you know, people who otherwise, you know, would get a permit wouldn't. Quite frankly, there's a ton of work that's done across the city today with no permits.
Councilmember.
So these fees.
Councilmember.
He can finish.
Okay.
Go ahead.
These fees, are they linked to CPI? Do you raise them every year based on CPI anyway?
Yeah, most of these fees are increased by consumer cost index or consumer price index depending on what that fee is. And every year, the council gets to see those fees. So every year in June, we establish what those fees would be and what that increase would be based on CPI, and that could go up or down. It rarely goes down. It has, but it rarely goes down. There have been times in the past when councils have said no CPI this year. So that's, that's occurred particularly in the 2012, 13, 14 timeframe. So that, that's the council's option. You have an ordinance that requires us to bring that to you with that increase embedded, but you have the option to lower back down. We also have rules in terms of rounding, right? So we, we're not running it, you know, three cents. So oftentimes, we won't actually increase it because CPI is a small amount. And so it doesn't get increased this year, but it'll wait for a couple of years. CPI catches up and the fee goes from $15 to $17 just because it, we try to do it in whole numbers as best we can.
So when you're budgeting this, this is in addition to the CPI increase?
Yes. So this would be capturing the costs that the general fund is picking up now. So this would be thinking about, you know, not only, you know, the overhead, right, that I spoke of.
I got it.
But it also recognizes that, you know, there are certain individuals or just groups of people or whatever that take a lot more time. So that goes to councilmember Resner's comment that, you know, right now, that gets sort of grouped and everybody pays that. Maybe we should look at that a little differently.
But we hear this comment frequently that always, of course, you know, people always try to blame each other, that, oh, it's city's fault, or that they are taking too many cycles to approve my plans, and, or the city will say, well, your plans are not complete. One of the suggestions which I've heard from the builders and architects and engineers is, what if these plans are approved by an external company or an engineer, for example, architect, and they're stamped by it? Will the city accept them? And some of them are willing to pay for that service themselves to reduce the length of cycle or number of cycles.
We actually offer that already. So that's, that's an option. If a developer wants to come in and we have a backlog or whatever, we have a contract that they can go hire that individual, and that, that firm can do the plan check and they'll submit it to us, and we'll accept those reviews. We do do extra checks on fire life safety. So structural, that's pretty easy to accept. We like to do a double check on fire life safety and energy calcs because those are typical things that get missed or, or, you know, not done properly. But we have that service today if a developer wants to pay more. So that's, that's already in play.
Okay. Councilmember.
So we've had several roundtables on this specific issue. I would want to know a couple of things, like specifically for the, for planning, for the counter time. I would want this to be coupled with a policy about how much time they're spending at the counter and that there's a process for that. So it's not just that we're going to charge you more, but that the staff knows you're not going to spend an hour at the counter if we're going to be charging, you know. So if there's a new charge, there has to be also policy changes about how we use our time and, and just the expectation for the public. Because if, if we're going to start charging more, I think the natural inclination is like, I'll pay more if I get better service. And not to say that they're not getting great service, but I, this is just a, every development services department all across the state, because I've asked many of them on these specific issues. Everybody has the same issue, so we're not unique in that, and every city's told they're the worst city ever. So just take that into consideration. But, but in the roundtables we've done and in the feedback that I've gotten, similar to what you guys are all saying, communication is the biggest issue, and the deadlines. And so sticking to the deadline. So I know that we had had some talks about either extending the, the expectation of what that deadline is, or reframing what we mean by that deadline, or giving at 30 days, we're not done. If you'll wait another 30, we'll be able to get this back to you completed so you don't have six rounds, all of those types of things. So I think if we're going to, if we're going to ask them to pay more, one, I would want to know that we are going to fix by hiring what we had talked about, another engineer, where that gets bottlenecked because public works, our development services can't tell the public works people what to do. There's like that, but they need to get that information. And so whatever that is, I forget the name, whether it's a civil engineer or whatever it is that you want to, you call them, that we would be adding that. So is that reflective? If we're going to charge more, is it reflective that we're going to add a position to, to help with that bottleneck? Or no?
So that, that would be a different conversation. This wouldn't include that. This, this discussion is really just resolving our current budget issue. We are discussing whether or not we will recommend an additional position, which would be additional fees. You know, so that would be on top of it. But I, I totally agree with your sentiment that we would need some fashion of documentation, whether it's a policy, whether it's a city manager policy, council policy, you know, not sure what that would look like, for two reasons. One, that everybody knows what it is, as you stated, but it's also a change. It's a deviation from what we've been doing. And so we'd want to have very clear communication and documentation as to what the expectations are, as you noted. So totally agree with that. And then our intent is to have a different conversation with you relative to adding a senior engineer or something of that to help bridge the gap between public works and planning. So that, that's going to be a discussion when we discuss development services as a department.
All right. Josh?
Hello. Thank you, Mayor Muns and councilmembers. I just wanted to quickly address a couple of the items that have come up. This one is obviously, you know, near and dear to my heart. There's a lot, we know about development services has been subsidized. It's a lead generation tool for our, our city to, you know, one, we have to, you know, service them, make sure that plans are, are proper and that we're building things according to code, and there's liability, and, you know, there's a question about how much liability there actually is and, you know, and all of that. But we have to take them in and go through this process. But if, if this year, there could be some consideration in being modest with some of these fee increases, I do think with what the rumblings are right now around a potential sales tax increase, the brunt of sales tax is found in some of our construction projects. You're going to see more sales tax revenue potentially in the future from some of our construction. Also, I think that we can, it sounds like we're going to be able to see some reduced costs in the future with the digital submittal, which is very close. We're just talking to Jeremy Pagan about that, and it sounds like we're very close with that, which is going to hugely speed up our, our speed to permitting and hopefully help reduce some costs in the long run. Maybe not drastically, but I would just say in the next year, if you guys could be modest in some of these increases, you know, rather than having things compound over time, that would be great. The other thing is on the TOT, if we were to move forward with some of that automated receipt of the TOT from Airbnb and Verbo, I believe that, that can potentially bring in about 25% or 50% of what we're spending on the marketing dollars. It can really help increase some of the revenues on that side. So I appreciate your consideration in that. Thank you.
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Can Josh, can you explain that, the TOT part for the Airbnbs?
It automates it.
But are they actually, are we actually collecting from Airbnb?
So right now, it's, right now, it's a, you have to, you report yourself reporting as a host. There are a lot of other cities throughout the state of California and the country that have put into an ordinance to auto-collect that or requesting the websites to auto-collect that on our behalf and then send that to the municipalities directly. So there's an opportunity for there to be an ordinance to be voted on by this body to receive that and to give our finance team the ability to make that request. And that could have a number of increases. The way that you can get that data to know what the difference is, is that Visit Reading has a really great dashboard that shows the amount of TOT collected versus the amount of rooms that were booked, and that can actually show you some of the differences. For instance, in August of last year, we saw a pretty big discrepancy when we were looking at some of that data, which shows us that whether someone were to do that one time by accident without a permit or not, we don't actually, it would allow us to collect TOT from even those who don't have a proper permit, as opposed to having to go chase it.
So what's your estimate? You said 25% increase in the TOT if we do that?
Well, so in August, which is a very busy month, right, for, for travel, it was, it was a pretty big number. But if we were to be very conservative about it, I do think that there's a potential to see 250,000 or up to a million dollars in uncollected TOT because we're requiring people to self-report. I'll just tell you right now, a lot of those in the, in the host world, those numbers, they get foggy.
Yeah. Much appreciated. This is a great point. I wasn't aware of this, so I really appreciate bringing this to our notice. Thank you. So, so can you, yeah, can city manager comment on this? Is that something a good idea for us to do?
Yeah, just, just two points. And, and Mr. Johnson knows this, I don't quite agree with him on the value. The databases that we're comparing, ours that we use is very explicit to the city of Reading. It's, we pay for the programming, you know, they put that in. The database comparing to doesn't necessarily constrain itself to the city of Reading. We do think that there's illegal Airbnb or VRBO or short-term rental hosts in the city of Reading that we aren't collecting from, and this would be a benefit. So it's on our to-do list. We have connection. Actually, he connected us with an individual he met down at a conference. And so we have the connections. It's just trying to get to the top of the list. Because once you start that, my guess is that, you know, we've got 40, 80, 100 hours worth of work that we've got to put together to get all this done. And it just hasn't risen to the top, given some other criteria and emergencies, so.
Charge that to Josh since he recommended it.
Yeah.
I know, maybe, maybe you can suggest that Chamber of Commerce can look into further and help us with that plan and coming up.
Well, we, we already, we know the plan. We know what we have to do. We've got the connections. It's really just getting all the information together, writing an ordinance, getting that ordinance passed through, planning commission. There's just, it's just administrative work that we've got to get done.
I understand. I think this will help us, so I much appreciate it, Josh. Thank you.
I'm being, I'm being conservative because since it's associated with our short-term rental. But if, if Christian knows off the top of his head, then we'll leave it at that.
If it's purely the tax, it probably doesn't have to go to the planning commission, but we'll, we can take a look at that as we bring it forward.
Thank you, Josh.
But it's on our list. I actually, it's, if everybody knows how Outlook Task Work, it's always red on my list. And so it's still there and we're working on it.
Do you want to designate some of us to be also doing that?
I think we will only be interfering in the staff.
It's really just administrative work at this point. We just have to connect.
Do you want us to take something off your table, off your?
Well, no. I think we've got it.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it truly is. We have to write a contract.
I would be happy to remove the tree ordinance business. We can just push that aside and prioritize this over that.
Actually, I agree with Vanessa.
So I would suggest if you want to talk about that one, item 12, next Tuesday would be a great opportunity.
All right. Vice Mayor.
I mean, it sounds like we have consensus, but if we're concerned about three last police officers and we're chasing $100,000 in billing fees and $100,000 for planning fees, then it sounds like every $100,000 counts, you know? And so we should go after that. And I, I think that was good feedback. If it's even worth $100,000, they could put another police officer on the street.
Yeah, and to allay some of the timing concerns, I'll repeat that, you know, that because of the nature of some of this work, a lot of this would not go into effect until June of 2026. And so you'd have a full opportunity to review that at that point in time. And if the council would prefer, we can also come back when we have, you know, 80% of the data before we do the final tune and make sure you're comfortable with that.
For which part?
For just the fees.
Oh, fees.
The fee part, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't know we were talking.
Yeah, as we get more into this, let's say next January, we've done time studies, we know a lot more about where we're headed, what it would be and how it would look like, what the structure might look like in terms of the reward versus not. And we can bring that back in like January of next year for, you're like, yeah, that looks good, we want to do that. And then we would do the final push to do the rest of the 20%, something like that.
Yeah, I would be interested to know what exactly these things are and what percentage we're talking about for whom. And, and I would love if the policies could be changed before we start charging for it, that we actually start trying to change behavior before we charge for that behavior.
Yeah, I think the way I would see that lining out is that we would bring back sort of the parameters, you know, here's what we're seeing, here's what we're looking like. We would have a lot more examples, right? As this type of permit would go from this to this. And then if the council is like interested, then we could do the next 20% of the work, which is flushing out the policy statements, finishing off the fees. Because every fee that we has, have, has to be adjusted, adjusted appropriately. And there's a lot of them. So that, that would be helpful actually for staff to make sure you're, you're on board before we do that last little bit.
It would also be great, sorry, it would also be great if you divided, if we did building fees and then planning fees or planning and then building, but like divide that up first so that we can actually consume this all and see the nuances that are.
Yeah, we, we certainly would do that. And depending on the magnitude of it, it could be two separate meetings or one, you know, based on if it all kind of flows really nice and we're like, wow, this is a lot better and cleaner than we thought, we could do it in one or.
Whoever would be angry or let's have them come first.
Come first? Okay, noted.
From my, my single person perspective is that this is going to be more time-consuming. This is like a, really something which we should put down the list compared to the other things. That's my perspective, but you guys can.
What do you mean?
I mean, on increase of these fees right now.
They're going to come back with what they think on.
Well, I would say that if we're going to use these increased fees, because this is just the one, we got a couple more to look at, and we're going to use these as an ongoing basis for revenue, it, it kind of needs to be on that burner that we can get done within the timeframe that we're assuming the revenue's increase.
Can, can I just ask? If we increase these, and this might be a question for Jeremy, but if we increase these, do we feel like it'll, it's a budget that you can then work with to actually have the staff that you want and deliver the service that you want?
It'll help tremendously, for sure.
I don't get it. I have to ask you.
Yeah.
I don't get to ask him?
Yeah, no, because he's in the audience and he doesn't have a microphone. But, and, and, you know, as the council knows, I spent some time in that shop as well, so. But, but it'll help us get there. So what I would say is that as our budget woes ease, it'll give you more opportunity to think of staffing in a different way. So, you know, if, if this is representative of the existing staffing and overhead and everything else, the council will have opportunities in the future to say, yeah, we're still good with those fees, but we want to add a little bit more in terms of staffing or specific types of staffing, and we don't want to charge the fees more, right? We don't want to increase the fees.
Does this reduce our, I know we subsidize them about a million, so does this actually reduce that subsidy by 700,000?
Yeah, that's the point, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be actually 200,000 in this case, right? Because it's, it's.
Three, one, and five?
No, it's just one and one, because there's two different options for each, right? One is the one I didn't recommend, but it is, it is there. If you wanted to capture every last little dime.
I got way more excited about that than it is. Okay.
You know, you could do that, but it's, it's 100,000 each. And so this just better captures and it reduces the amount of money that the general fund has to put towards this activity.
All right. 200,000.
Do you want to move on?
Yep, consensus, thank you very much. The next is going to be, oops, went too far, recreation fees. And so this is, recreation fees are based on a city council policy. So this policy goes back a number of years. And essentially, the, the policy says, and it's council policy 806, if anybody wants to go look it up, but it says that when it comes to recreation, we only charge the direct cost of the part-time staff that run the programs and specific operation and maintenance costs that the program needs. So whether it's, you know, materials, you know, equipment, that sort of stuff. It does not include the full-time positions that support the programs. In other words, we have full-time staff, of course, that are running the programs on a year-round basis. They are not covered within the fees charged for the recreation program. And we also don't have just the overhead. So, you know, we have the, you know, superintendents and supervisors who run the programs year-round. They're not included in the fees. And then, of course, the director, you know, and utility costs and floor costs and rental fees, those aren't charged. And that's pursuant to council policy. When you look at specific program types, so adult programs have a little bit of recapture. So we put 105% in there, and I, I was reminded by our city attorney that never put 105% on anything. What that is supposed to represent is that it's 100% of those direct costs, what it takes to rent a room, hire an instructor, provide materials, and teach the class. Then there's an adder of about 5% to account for a little bit of overhead. So if our overhead is 40%, we collect 5% of it. So that's just by the, by the policy. Youth programs actually only have a recovery rate of 90%. So in other words, no overhead, no overhead whatsoever, and it only collects 90% of all the direct costs. And that's because we intentionally want to bring those costs down for access to the youth programs. The aquatic center is not included in that policy, so it has different mechanisms. Martin Luther King, Junior Giants Fantasy Fountain and all those, those are just free by policy. So that's how we establish our recreation program policies. So really, the question is, do you want to keep that policy? You like it the way it is and we're just going to not touch that? Or do you want to modify that? And so some ways to modify it is resident versus non-resident fees. And so we're actually experimenting a bit with that coming up. Right now, we don't care what zip code you come from, you get the same price. That means anybody who lives anywhere gets the reduced price. Clearly, a way to do this would be say, you know what? This cheaper price, this discounted price should apply for city residents only who pay property taxes and all that. So they get that, but non-residents don't. Now, there would be some non-residents who live in the outskirts, because the way we would do it is by zip code. So there's some people that live just outside the city limits would still benefit from the discount, but the further out you live with a different zip code, you wouldn't get that benefit. So that would be a modification to the policy. If we make those, those changes, we're talking somewhere between 55,000 and 500,000. And the reason that gap is so big is because if you just like, look at minor tweaks, resident, non-resident, you know, maybe a little bit more recapture on the, the youth programs, that number's much smaller. If you say full in, we want to capture all the overhead, we want to capture the superintendent and the supervisors, and that's going to be spread across all recreation programs, that number could be as much as 500,000. So the question for the council is that, that, how you want to modify that, if at all. And then while you're thinking about that, we also need to think about how do we approach others that are using our facilities? So, you know, right now, we have costs for people to access our facilities, some facilities, and it's free other facilities. So do we want to have individuals who are reserving, you know, that's not just using, like if you just happen to get on a field and it's yours, great. You want to reserve it, exclude others. Should that be free or should there be a cost associated with that? So I will step aside and let you discuss.
I support both. We should have the, what you just said, also, we should capture the administrative and indirect cost as well.
Can I ask Director Mini a couple of questions?
Of course. But he has to come out here and get a microphone.
Yeah.
Jeremy, you should be upset.
I never spent time in recreation, so, you know, there, there is a difference in my knowledge base.
I remember that when I sat on CSAC and we were reviewing fees, that it wasn't necessarily the percentage, but it was often like, this dollar amount feels unattainable in this specific program. So I think the piece where I'm struggling is, I could say, let's go to 95% or something. I'm not, I'd like to know how that translates in terms of actual programs.
Yeah, a couple percent isn't really going to do much. When we talk about going to like an all-in cost rate, it would potentially cover all the costs of running that program with the admin staff and everything like that. But the rate for say like a summer camp goes up substantially. I mean, at, at some point, you start pricing people out. So if you were to go up, right now, we've contemplated like a 10% increase. The camp fee doesn't go up too, too much. We feel like that's a comfortable amount. But really, your overall revenue might only go up by 80,000 or 90,000 per year for all of the programs at that little 10% increase. So it's a, it's a piece of it, but it's not going to get you all the way. Now, the more you go up, then you start coming with, you start coming up with some consequences.
Yeah, I think that that, that balance there is, I feel comfortable with say a 10% increase on what, registration fee? But I'm not sure if we encompass all of that. I really don't want to price out a large number of our, like, residents. But I feel like a 10% increase feels attainable.
What about, what do we do about the ones that aren't paying anything?
Well, you mean that all user groups should pay? I think that all user groups should pay fees for park rentals. If you want to reserve a park and nobody else is allowed to play on it at that point in time, then you should probably pay to exclude people.
I agree.
Yes.
Nice question.
Yes, please.
So this goes back to discussion we had a few months ago with Little League. Of course, the council would like to keep youth sports affordable. So would some of this have some sort of impact on Little League as far as having them pay a small portion for fields, not something astronomical to raise their costs or?
Yeah, they would, so the way that it's written right there is that potentially they would be paying for what every other group would pay. So if you and I went to go rent a field, we would pay $47 for a two-hour block. Any Little League group as it is, by council's direction a few months ago, through the end of this fiscal year, pays $0. So they would have to be able to raise those fees, which collectively between East Reading and West Reading Little League, that is $101,000 between the two of them on collected revenue. So thinking about my experience working with the soccer park, there came a point where there was a lease agreement with the city to be able to rent fields for the city. So the soccer park spent $6,000 a month. What it did to their registration, it only increased their registrations by about $5 a month for each child to be able to play. And, and that was affordable. So going back to Councilmember Resner's question there, as far as understanding the actual impact of that, you know, if Little League is going to have to spend $100 more to register, that's, that's not so affordable. But if it's an impact of like $5 or $10, then I mean, that's something I could support.
That's a lot of candy bars, guys. That's a lot of candy bars.
Yeah, let's, let's just talk about the, the mechanics here. So there's, there's two different things really that we're talking about here, maybe three. One is just this overall recreation program, you know, policy, which, what I'm hearing is that we modify the policy to capture some additional costs, but not too much, right? And, and I would, right now, there's a lot of flexibility that's within Travis's shop to not price any out. In other words, we're really, from a budgetary perspective, we're looking at the overall program and having it balance out, right? It's almost impossible to do every little thing and make it all perfect, right? So, so that's one element. The other element is, you know, your one-off facility reserve, right? And the other is your ongoing and, and regular use. So the Little League we're talking about, that's an ongoing regular use. And we're already working through MOUs with them. And so it makes sense that if, if it's going to be an ongoing, regular, annual use, that we actually go that to an MOU, which means it kind of falls outside of the policy. And then you have the ability to say, staff, what you recommended here doesn't make a lot of sense. And we would say, yeah, but we agreed with them on that. And you could say, we still don't like it, we want to give them cheaper prices. That's your prerogative. Whereas the one-off, where somebody says, hey, I'm throwing a giant party and I want to reserve this entire field for this, you know, this party, we're playing baseball, we're doing all this, and it's one time over a weekend, that's sort of a different fee because it's a one-off. Does that make sense?
Yeah, perfect.
And so that's how we would push this forward. And again, like with the development services fees, some of these can happen more quickly, some of them are going to take a little while to put into play for a couple of reasons. Number one, like our summer programs, well, that, that's already published, right? That's already happening this year. So if we want to make some changes, that might affect fall. It won't affect summer. So, so if you're all on board with that, then what we'll do is we'll work to refine what we think we're hearing and, and bring that back. And in this case, I think it's relatively easy because it's really modifying our policy. So the council policy would be presented back to you for approval.
I shall have a couple of questions. Tenessa, yes, please.
Well, I just, the resident, non-resident, I, I think we should definitely be doing that. And then I feel like there's going to be unintended consequences, like Little League for one. But there may be others that we don't know the ramifications of what exactly this means. This feels like, sounds great, but I'm not sure exactly, we know exactly what we're voting on specifically for, if there's other groups other than Little League that are using facilities and now they're going to be charged, like, I don't know if the volleyball courts have a reservation program or if you're just allowed to go out there and use them or now do they have to reserve them? Are they going to have to pay for that? Because, you know, that, that sort of changes those dynamics. So I would, is there a way for us to know exactly what you mean by that?
Yeah, so two things. One is the policy is your policy. So we have to bring the policy back for approval before we can do anything with it. So that's number one. And number two, all fees that we do requires your approval. So we can't change anything we're doing now without coming back to you and having that officially approved by you.
Sure, but for like, I know, but for, if you're saying 100,000, that, would that 100,000 at the bottom of this include that Little League's paying 101,000 or whatever at the bottom of this include that Little League's paying $101,000 or whatever it is that you said? Or that doesn't include that?
No, that's everybody that's reserving. So that, that includes all facilities? So that's like Reading Park?
So that's not just?
Yeah, that's like Reading Park facility, that's...
Well, we collect about $55,000 in revenue from park rentals. Sometime, things are actually excluded by MOU, specifically because that group may have helped us build a facility like the sand volleyball courts.
Oh, okay.
So there are some things like that. A lot of that number would be a Little League-type group. But it's basically the direction of should we be doing these or should we start bringing things out? We kind of do need direction on that with Little League in particular, because we are working on those MOUs, so it is kind of a good conversation to have. Because we do have to bring that MOU back with some direction, otherwise that section's going to be blank when we bring it back.
Well, I mean, I would say, I think I heard direction, which was, you're okay with some increases or some charges to Little League, but it has to be an amount that is small relative to their overall registration so that we don't price kids out, and so...
Well, I mean, I think, I want to be really sensitive. Everything is more expensive. I don't want to recover all administrative and indirect costs for all programs. I think if you increase the cost of, let's just say, the summer program and you double that, it does, all the working families that have moms and dads that are both working rely on that, and it, and they're great programs. So I know they don't want to lose it, they don't have alternatives, and it's just double, they just wouldn't be able to afford it. So I mean, part of the, part of the way that this community works is that we do offer these types of things. So especially on the children's ones, I would want to be really sensitive. Like, if it's going from $60 to $80, that's a big percentage increase, but it's 20 bucks. If we're talking about camp and it's $280 and we're going to go up to $410, like, that's, you know, maybe percentage-wise, we're around the same amount, but it's actually a lot more money. So I just want to be really sensitive that maybe some things may go up dollar-wise more percentage than others. Like, there should be some kind, some nuance to this, because I don't want to price out working families having their summer programs and, you know, or just being able to teach their kids how to swim. Like, we want them to learn how to swim, and they're relying on the Aquatic Center for that.
So I think that was the consensus of the council, that's what I heard.
Well, I think he said the first one was, he wants the full amount. So I just want to make sure we don't go for the full.
Right, but a consensus, meaning majority of the council, I heard, wanted to, you know, keep it in a reasonable zone. And again, we have to bring this council policy back. So how we establish those, you have to approve before we...
Right, but I'm just saying, like, I don't think it's going to be 10% across the board. I would think that it would sort of be new.
Just want to clarify, I'm not saying that charge everything. We should let them come up with a plan which is reasonable and takes into account that we do not price the people out of use. So I do not mean to say that we should charge full amount.
I think we understand the consensus, and we'll go work on the policy and bring that back. Again, you have to approve that policy before it gets put into play.
All right, now it's my turn. We have talked before, Travis, about, I think it was the Western League, a lot of times, they have first option at reserving the fields. And they reserve the field so many times that a lot of other people get excluded from using the field. That's still correct?
Yeah, that would typically affect Travel Ball as well as our in-house leagues through Reading Recreation, where we actually have to...
So we're losing a lot of revenue by letting them have first choice and get all the fields?
I wouldn't say a lot, but some. We saw more revenue when the sports park was shut down. Now, most of those groups have been diverted back there, or actually, a lot of them have found places where they can go and get around all of our facilities as a whole, so...
So everybody's going to be, have equal opportunity to have the fields?
They get first priority under current practice.
And how many?
The Little Leagues.
I mean, just, can you guess, if it's 100, the Little League gets 85 of them? And then 15% for everybody else?
Basically, during their season, they get 100% of the use. They get all of those slots. So that'd be spring season and fall season.
And what are they, I mean, we weren't charged about, they were doing upkeep, and I think we had some challenges with that. Sometimes they weren't doing it properly, or...
Yeah, it's just, it's a mixed bag when, when you have a volunteer group, board turnover, things like that. The MOU that we're working on, which I think is a little outside of this particular conversation, but that will address what each particular group would do, when, how they would do it, who would review that work. And essentially, that would establish a mechanism by which you're lowering fees for that group so that you have some justification to not charge.
So we're talking about raising some of it, but at a modest rate for them? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes.
I think they're doing an MOU.
Yeah, and I think, I think, yeah, I, I think I understand the consensus of the council, and so Travis is currently working on those MOUs for next year, as was the direction. So it's free this year, work on those MOUs. And so he'll be negotiating, you know, based on sort of this conversation, what that number should be, and, and you'll be able to see that and approve that in the future.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
And just, just for the record, so what we'll do is we'll take this, and what this does is just build into some of the assumed revenues streams, is, so, and then you'll, you'll see all this as you come back.
How much, you think?
I think $100,000 is probably realistic. I think we have here about $155,000. But based on this conversation, we may reflect that in a lower number moving forward. I, I think I know the consensus on this, based on this conversation over the last hour. So this is just all of the city fees. So many of our fees don't have the, you know, overhead charges and that sort of stuff, or we have no charges whatsoever. So for instance, the city clerk, you know, issues a number of special event permits, and there's actually a lot of work that goes into that to process all those. We do that for free today, we have zero collection. So I think we would recommend that there's some charge, you know? Probably not a full boat recovery, because we want people to have events, we like having those downtown, but, you know, maybe a $20, $50, you know, there should be probably some charge for that. Similarly, we're actually reviewing our business license fee. We have a tax, right, that was approved, but we don't charge a fee associated with issuing those taxes. So we're looking at whether we could or couldn't, so that would be something that could come back. And then all the other departments, you know, have some fees that are associated with what they do. Police and Fire for response, you know, DOI collisions, you know, airports has fees associated with all of their operations. And so, you know, I think from what I heard today is that you're willing to consider some increases in these to, to capture some of the overhead and some of the other expenses that are being subsidized, but not necessarily the full amount, because you don't want to price this out. And so from, if it, if it's acceptable to the council, we'll review all those. And these ones in particular will probably be just brought back with the whole fee schedule because they're really minor in nature, and a lot of these have gone up already. So the Fire Department did a real good job last year of revisiting a lot of the fees for inspections. The difference, last year, we proposed that we had rolled it in over three years. I told them, roll it in all this year. So we did one-year roll-in, now we're going to do two years in one. But so the departments here have done a decent job, plus a lot of these fees are adjusted every year by CPI anyway. So we've captured a lot of those expenses. So this is not as big, and you know, we really didn't put any revenue estimates here, but we thought we should be consistent with our fee charging practices. So that's what this is, if there's consensus on the council.
No. I mean...
What are they? What are we saying yes to? Just any fee? Like, you're just going to add a fee?
Just what I just said, so...
I know, but do you have like a ballpark? Like, how many events per year are we talking?
20, 30 events per year? So again, you're going to see all of these again, right? Nothing can happen without you saying yes. So every single one of these fees, you'll see, there's a spreadsheet that you see every June, and it says what the fee is, what our recommended increase is.
And then we can like...
In red, and you can say, I don't like that, I don't want that. Yeah, you can go through line by line.
Whoopie!
And so what I'm suggesting is that I think I understand where the council's sitting on all these, and that we are going to be able to put together a fee schedule that you'll find acceptable.
Yes.
Okay. So at the bottom there, you see that, you know, the, up above all of the things you've just discussed, somewhere between 2.5 and 3.7, probably closer to 2.5 based on some of the discussion that we just had. You're not going to really like this next slide, but this is the realities of how we do the city's budget. You're really not going to see the rest of all of that come together to get to the $5 million until April 17th. And that's because we have the 10-year plan, so we always have these assumptions that we make in year three that are all coming now. You know, the, the assumptions we make in year three and four are now becoming year one and two as we, as we move into this. And so as we review and, and look and scrutinize all of our internal charging practices, we have a lot of grants, as you know, because you approved the grants, that have come to, you know, fruition over the last two years that are not proper, were not properly accounted for within that. So, you know, we're working towards making sure that the staff, who are general fund staff, that are going to be assigned to grants, that we're, we're capturing that grant funding. We normally don't worry about that too much, right? Normally, we would say, we've got a good budget, it's, everything's great. And so what happens is that we just realize savings, right? Normally, we do it so that when the general fund staff member charges to the grant, that's just money that the general fund doesn't have to expend, and it just becomes savings and it rolls into your reserves. This year, because we're so tight, we want to make sure that we have identified those grants that are being worked on by general fund staff, and that'll be a direct offset so that it'll help the ongoing expenses. We're recasting all of our personnel and O&amp;M costs, because in many cases, we're just guessing what those costs were in the out-years, and now we're bringing them back into real costs, both for personnel and O&amp;M. And then every year, every two years that we do our budget, we reanalyze our cost allocation plan. That's the general government that gets charged out to other enterprise funds. That's, you know, a lot of, you know, Greg Shop, My Shop, Char Shop, that gets reallocated based on what we see is coming at us for workload. So all of that should get us the rest of the way home. If not, we'll bring additional items for you to consider on the 18th. But right now, I'm feeling pretty comfortable that when all of that comes together, we have all that information developed based on the information you provided today, that we'll be able to present to you a balanced budget for the general fund on April 17.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a question, just thinking in the future, do we have any ability for council to adjust policy to perhaps spend $500,000 or $1 million out of our general budget to afford more officers in anticipation or speculation? Maybe we'll have a community sales tax passed in the future, or that?
Yeah, so if, the question is, you want to burn further into reserves?
Just asking.
You can, yeah. Clearly, the policy that exists to have a 10% reserve is your policy. You know, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it. Yeah, I wouldn't recommend it just from the standpoint, you know, of, you know, we, we did that, and I, I think we did that for good reason. In the last budget, where we knew we had a structural deficit, because we, we felt at the time that the sales tax had dropped so precipitously that it certainly had to come back to a little stronger rate, it clearly did not. So I strongly would recommend against doing those types of things. I would suggest that you make those fiscal decisions when those fiscal realities become a reality.
You know, generally, Mr. Robinett's facial expressions tell the whole story.
We can do that.
And you, you have a, you have a legal requirement to have an expenditure plan that you can afford.
If I might just also add, your reserves are taken into account in your credit rating, so if there are any bond issuances, it may impact, depending upon whether you hit certain thresholds or not, it may impact the interest rates that you're paying on any bond issuances.
We could also require that parks actually have Big League teams go out to RFP so that a third party would run it, and we would save $500,000 there as well, and that would actually keep our cops.
So just, I actually brought that up, my, there's actually been a lot of good momentum since the council made the decision. We feel like, based on the soccer association's engagement over the last two weeks, that we'll actually have the restaurant open in some fashion before the end of June. And so we're very confident, and we'll probably build a budget that shows that that being a net zero cost in year one, based on what we're seeing today and the activities.
Promise on it.
Do you think it'll make money? To the tune of $480,000?
It could, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to commit that. But I, I am going to commit...
But you said June, so that...
I am going to commit...
Before we approve the budget, we can project for that.
Yes. I am going to commit that I believe that we're going to make that first year a net zero cost to the general fund.
Oh, that's very good.
That's great.
And well, and I'm going to thank the soccer association.
It's a liquor license.
A large part for that, because the, they're, they're really, well, you heard, you know, what Kenny said at the dais, and he's true to his word, and he's already getting busy, and we've already had conversations with ABC as far as liquor licenses. And so I'm with that restaurant coming open and the liquor license getting issued, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to make that be at least a net zero, if not a net positive.
Will the soccer park now have a...
Yeah.
...be able to sell beer?
No. Well, so that's one of the discussions that's happening, depends on how we actually run the liquor license. They clearly can do it on a case-by-case basis, but that's a discussion that Travis is having with the soccer association to best see the pathway forward on that license.
All right. Yep. Are we...
I think you're, you're there, and then I just, as you know, I can't pass up an opportunity to say, okay, I think we're really, really close, if not all the way there, to solving our budget issue. But, you've seen a lot of this before, but as you talked about, we're still down 12 police officers, we're still down 12 firefighters, and we're doing nothing to address our infrastructure problem. So while I'm happy that we're able to get to a balanced budget and we can still provide services, we still have a big looming issue, and we all want to get back to our full staffing on our public safety, and we all want to fix our roads, and we all want to make sure that we can do everything we need to do. And that is going to be a continued future conversation.
Well, math is something which no one can defeat. The numbers don't add up, they don't add up.
Math, math is hard.
Math wins every day.
So the, I think, as a city, we have to realize that the only way out of this is either we increase the wealth, the total wealth, which requires business innovation and new industries and new businesses. That is what we should be really focusing on, so we do not have to worry about cutting the police and fire. That's what my comment is. But the hard reality is, a public and all of us have to realize, we can't defeat math. We can't just spend without having the revenue, and that requires building the wealth.
Omegor. Defeat it.
Okay.
Are we done there?
Well, so this is questions, but I like to bring this one back up.
Well, thank you.
And with that, I...
Got the list, yeah.
Well, the list, I don't like the list because it's, it's impartial.
Can you go back to the slide?
It's partial, sorry. Yeah, that, that list is not complete, so...
Can you put that slide back on so that they can see that, that long list of...
Actually, Barry, I want you to bring the slide every city council meeting, not just for the council, but for the public to know also.
That list right there.
Yeah, this list is not complete. Yeah, this is a representative, and it is not complete.
I think he's saying you can put up the slide.
Every council meeting.
Every council meeting.
Yeah, we'll just frame it.
Mr. Robinett always goes last, so he can put that slide up at the end.
Well, on, on Tuesday...
Or we can start with that, so everyone sees.
He's going first and last on Tuesday, so we'll actually include this slide in both of those presentations.
Yeah, very good.